Thank you.
In this place.
I recall the school board meeting to order. Start with the salute to the flag. Please your eyes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Chenoweth, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bannas Clemmons?
Here.
Mr. Cormac?
Here.
Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mrs. Dolan? Mr. Gerhardt?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Mrs. Walters?
Here.
And Mr. Wirth?
Here.
For the sake of the board, Mrs. Dolan emailed me today and there's a family emergency she will not be able to make it tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. So, there is no public comment on the electronic and there's nobody signed up to speak to board agenda items, so we will move the public comment to later in the agenda. So with that, we'll move to the president's report. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, which provides us another opportunity to highlight the outstanding professional staff we are so lucky to have at Penridge. Teachers play a critical role in educating and shaping our children, the future leaders of our community and our country. Our kind, patient, hardworking, dedicated, and understanding professionals help mold our children, guide them, and challenge them in positive directions. We, the Penridge community, entrust our children to these teachers who make an impact to their daily lives. No matter where we are in life, a teacher influenced us, and they continue to impact our lives every day. When we meet new employees, colleagues, or neighbors with a wealth of skills and abilities, a teacher helped shape them. Every new business owner, automotive technician, electrician, carpenter, doctor, engineer, or nurse can name a teacher who inspired them. Every one of us has had at least one teacher in mind who encouraged and motivated us. Take a moment to reflect on the teachers in your life. Who influenced your life? Who is making an impact today? Let teachers past and present know you value them. Let them know how they helped shape your future. It is time to say thank you to the exceptional teachers you know. On behalf of the Penridge School Board, I would like to offer a sincere heartfelt thank you to all the educators in Penridge. Let's give them a standing round of applause.
Well, talk about drop the mic, we're done. Mr. Kraus, thank you for that, and it leads in perfectly to the first item of the superintendent's report. But to answer your question, mine was first grade Ms. Kohut, who became second grade Mrs. Baumatt. So first of all, as a kid, I wasn't quite sure how that was possible, that all of a sudden it was the same teacher, but it wasn't the same name. So I got through that in second grade, but she was the first one to teach me or to encourage me that I was good at math. And so that has been a lifelong passion that she ignited from a very young age. So for me, she would be at least the first one. She wouldn't be the only one, but she was the first one. So thank you for making us think of that, I appreciate that. I want to also share a happy Teacher Appreciation Week to our Penridge teachers. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week and was dedicated to our incredible teachers. We are so thankful and grateful for everything that they do. Their impact, as Mr. Kraus mentioned, on our students and community is immeasurable. To help show our appreciation, in addition to the activities held to honor our staff in every building, we asked students and parents to write letters to their teachers. We weren't sure how many we would get, as this is the first year we've ever done this district-wide. We received more than 700 personal letters written from students and parents to individual teachers across the districts. So throughout all of last week, we had the joy of being able to drive around all the schools and hand teachers those letters that they received from their students and from their parents, some that they hadn't seen in years. The number of teachers at the high school, I delivered many of them in the high school, the teachers who would call me back and say, "This is from a remote kid." I have not seen this kid face-to-face all year. I had no idea the impact that we had on that. And so just to hear those words, so thank you to the parents and the students who did it, but also a huge thank you to Ms. Cooper, who had a really good idea and worked really hard to pull it off. So Kelly, thank you for that. It really went a long way to show the teachers. She also put together a video. Over the course of the next month, she's going to be bleeding some of these over our social media, but she did put together an initial video to give you a little bit of a teaser of just a couple of the letters. You have to live through about 40 seconds of me, but then the good stuff starts. Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Okay, can you pause that? Can we make it louder or not?
Uh, no. It's coming through the projector.
Okay. Can you turn that mic?
I'm sorry, I need to reset.
Can we play it through that computer and use that microphone?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can skip me, but. Hey!
I'm sorry. You know what I mean.
Why don't you ask?
Hey, Mr. Friedman, I just wanted to say thank you for what you do for both myself and the rest of your students throughout the year. And the rest of your students throughout the year. Please, I speak for everyone when I say that you have provided our lives and are truly grateful for it.
Ms. West, thank you, you're an awesome teacher. I loved having you as a math teacher this year. During our hybrid schedule, you did so good posting videos and everything every day. Really helped me learn the material and everything while being at home still trying to learn. And you just did an awesome math teacher this year, thank you.
Yeah, my sister, you're one of my first teachers I've graduated from. One of the biggest I've ever learned from. I can assume that most of you students also feel the same way. Every time you walk back to class in the hallway, you point out who's in class who's frustrated. That's going to be Kira. You got me going so much better now. I took her 400-page book and I hope you keep making kids like learning for a long time. From Paris to Mexico.
Well, I'm sorry that the audio wasn't perfect, but I hope you got the sense in terms of how meaningful that obviously is going to be to all the teachers who receive them. Please be watching our social media. Mrs. Cooper was able to go around and have teachers recorded reading notes from their students, as Mr. Friedman did, so obviously very emotional in terms of capturing that. So, thank you again, Ms. Cooper, for that. All right, next, let's talk about April showers. We previewed this a little bit last month, and it has happened. And so the April showers event at Penridge High School was an unbelievably incredible success. Penridge High School received the National Banner School Award from the CEO of Special Olympics Pennsylvania. Penridge is the only school in Bucks County to earn this recognition. The Penridge Unified Team and Club raised $24,534 for Special Olympics PA. They told a story at the event where they started the threshold at 5,000 because they had no idea what they would earn, and they thought that sounded like a lot of money. And then two days later, they said, "We're at 6." And so then they just started inching up and inching up and inching up. The highest event ever done by a one-day high school in Pennsylvania history was just over $22,000. Our students raised $24,534, which means they are the largest one-day event for any high school event ever in the state of Pennsylvania for Special Olympics. And then we got soaked and had lots of fun. A huge thank you to the Percoccy Fire Company who came, brought out their big ladder truck, and just outs the front walkway where the buses go, and people just got to run through that. So as you remember, the April showers event was also a contest between Penridge and Souderton. And there are two really good pieces, two pieces of really good news to share. One, together the two districts raised over $41,000 on our two events for Special Olympics Pennsylvania. And also, Penridge raised more money. So that means Dr. Frank Gallagher, the superintendent in Souderton, has to wear Penridge green during their May meeting. So there was one of the pictures up here of us delivering that to him. Frank's a good man, he'll send us pictures, their meeting is later in May. So, it was an incredible day celebrating the hard work of the Penridge High School Unified Sports, the club, and the teams for their efforts in bringing inclusion to Penridge. Our summer meal program. Excited to announce that the Penridge Nutritional Services Department has received a $10,000 grant that will help offset the cost of the summer meal program. Thank you to Ms. Gina Giratano, our director, for her leadership and the entire Nutritional Services Department for their dedication that brings families to our meals, meals to our families year-round. They started a week after the shutdown last year, about the 20th of March, and every day, every week, they have been out there providing meals to our families. Please check out this video that gives you a sense, just a small time-lapse sense of what that delivery looks like in the summer. We go through a lot of milk. And a gallon of milk is heavy. End of the year events. It's hard to believe that the last day of school is exactly one month from tomorrow. If you assign a letter of the alphabet to the last 26 days of school, this is from my kindergarten niece who I saw on Sunday and told me she was doing this. Today was C-Day, which means we only have 23 days left of school. The end of year is an exciting and busy time for our schools. We're celebrating the Class of 2021 in many ways. Senior Awards Night will be held on June 3rd. Senior Sunrise on June 4th with the Senior Prom on the evening of June 4th. The Executive Council decided they wanted to see the sunrise and sunset from the Field of Hellman together as the Class of 2021. We'll have a senior walk, which began last year, where seniors and their families can come in caps and gowns and come through the high school and also Hellman and pose for pictures. One last walk through the halls as graduates. And then obviously graduation on June 15th here at Hellman. Pray for good weather. I'm appreciative of Dr. Cashman, Mr. Hagan, and the students who are on the Senior Class Executive Council for their work in planning so many creative ways to honor the Class of 2021. Other events to look for include Mr. Penridge on June 8th, Mini-Thon on May 22nd, and the Penridge Performing Arts Department, who is performing together Movie Madness on both May 25th and 27th on the Field at Hellman. The District Arts Show is May 26th and will be in the halls of the high school and move-up ceremonies for our 5th and 8th graders. Follow our Facebook page for more information on ways to attend or watch live some of the end-of-the-year events. I'd like to now hand over to Aiden McGinnis for the student liaison report. Thank you, Aiden.
Good evening, everyone. So, first I'd like to say this is my last meeting and it's been such a privilege to come here and talk about a few things that we're doing here at Student Council each and every month, such as Sidewalk Chalk Day, which will be going on on May 27th. And so what this is, it's a yearly event where students get to come out during periods 9 and 10 to decorate the high school sidewalk and to show some of their artistic abilities. So it's a great way to let off steam and force show off some of the talents here at the high school. And then about two weeks later, we'll have Mr. Penridge, and that's on June 8th, or a week later, about June 8th. And that's where we will be having a comedic talent show, showing off about four or five of our seniors and some of the things they can do. So that'll be at 7:00 PM, currently it's seniors only up at Hellman Field, but it will be aired, thanks to the folks at the Daily Ramble on YouTube with Penridge TV. Thanks.
And Aiden, we were aware that this was your final meeting. We'll be sad because you have been a wonderful representative and have represented the senior class very, very well, as well as this school. So we wanted, we got you a couple of thank yous. We fully expect in all the pictures from wherever you end up in the fall that we see the Penridge gear hanging out in your room. So Aiden, we want to say thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, definitely.
Back to you, Mr. Chenoweth.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton. And Aiden, thank you so much for representing the student senior class. All right, on to the consent calendar. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar listed as items A through H.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero.
Mr. Kraus, I need to interrupt. With the approval of the superintendent's personnel report, we have approved a new Director of Special Education, Supervisor of Special Education in the district, and he is here this evening. So I introduced him to you through email, but we're fortunate that Dr. Dan Cullen is able to be here tonight. Dan is our new Supervisor of Special Education. He spent the last nine years as a special ed administrator, including the last four as the Supervisor of Special Ed at Colonial Intermediate Unit. And so that broad-based experience will really help us here in Penridge. Prior to that, he was a special ed teacher for four years, including the Warren County, New Jersey Teacher of the Year in 2013. I'm sure he still has a plaque somewhere at home. Congratulations for that. Both Dan and his wife are just excited to be able to join the Penridge family and to get started on their work. So, Dr. Cullen, congratulations and welcome. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Yes, and welcome, Dr. Cullen. All right. We'll move into the Facilities Committee Report. We did have a meeting on May 4th. The notes are posted for anyone interested. And I'd like to make several motions here. We'll start with a motion to approve the high school tennis court site work. Base bid to Semel Excavating in the amount of $919,161.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. The next is a motion to approve the high school tennis court electric base bid to ESI, to BSI. There you go, gotta make that a little bigger. To BSI Electrical Contractors in the amount of $82,500.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Moving to obsolete items. I'd like to make a motion to approve obsolete items listed as A through E.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Okay, the next item is a motion to approve the RFP bid results listed as items A and B. First is for HVAC filters in the amount of $23,896.69. And item B is maintenance and transportation uniforms in the amount of $13,407.90.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Walters. Questions and comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. The next is a motion to approve Energy Cost Reduction Proposal by LPG for South and Central School. Schools, it's a power factor correction. We've installed this previously at the high school here, and we've had some very, very good results. Our return on investment is much earlier than expected and much better than expected. So we're expanding this to some, to South and Central Middle Schools. Okay, questions or comments from board members?
I'll second it.
Right? You seconded a question, but, all right.
You went off.
Thanks, Mr. Rice. Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments? See, you got me out of sequence, Aiden. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. All right, next is a motion to approve David Blackmore Associates for Geotechnical and Construction Quality Control Services Testing in the amount of $27,365.
Second.
Seconded, was that you, Mrs. Cullen? Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. The next Facilities Committee Meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 2nd. Already, June. All right, Finance, Mrs. Bannas Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. The Finance Committee met on May 4th. We have several contracts up for approval. I'll make a motion to approve Contracts A through J.
Second.
So there's a motion.
All right.
Sorry, I directed.
My apologies. I was distracted by the attorney. Seconded by Mrs. Walters. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Back to you, Mrs. Bannas Clemmons.
Thank you. And the lunch prices are also up for approval. These are unchanged from last year and have been unchanged for a while. Since the government is going to be giving free lunches for the next school year, these will only apply if someone is buying a second lunch. But I'll make a motion to approve the 2021-2022 lunch and breakfast prices. Elementary lunch, $2.60. Middle school and high school lunch, $3.10. Reduced lunch, $0.40. Elementary breakfast, $1.50. Middle school breakfast, $1.75. High school breakfast, $1.75. Reduced breakfast, $0.30.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cormac. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Back to you, Mrs. Bannas Clemmons.
Next, I'll make a motion to accept an award, the bid and RFP results, A through J.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Back to you, Mrs. Bannas Clemmons.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 2021-2022 general fund proposed final budget as presented on the PDE 2028 form. Revenues and expenditures are balanced at 144,790,562 and set the real estate tax rate at 135.2555 mils, which remains unchanged from the 1718, 1819, 1920, and 2021 fiscal years. No tax increase in a balanced budget.
Second.
Mrs. Chenoweth, I think we need a roll call vote on that particular issue, so.
For the record, Mrs. Chenoweth, seconded by Mr. Cormac. He was first to the table.
Saw a pretty big scrimmage there. Okay.
Yes? Mrs. Bannas Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dolan? Mr. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Walters?
Yes.
And Mr. Wirth?
Yes.
Keep that handy. We've got another roll call vote, just two items.
Mr. Kraus, before you, I would just like to recognize and thank Mr. Dolberg and his committee. I know that we've thanked him publicly a couple of times, but for five years of no tax increase and the second year in row of balanced budget, just want to thank him as well as the board for your leadership in this area. Thank you.
Okay, back to you, Mrs. Bannas Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. The next Finance, the next Finance Committee Meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 2nd.
Okay. All right, Personnel. The Committee did meet on May 3rd, and the notes are posted. So the first item I have is a motion to approve non-contracted employee benefits and compensation plan.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments from board members?
Mrs. Chenoweth, we'll need a roll call on this one, too.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Chenoweth, your own.
Mrs. Bannas Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dolan's accent. Mr. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Walters?
Yes.
And Mr. Wirth?
Yes.
Thank you. Good. All right, next, I have a motion to approve the following revised job descriptions listed as A through L.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gerhardt. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Next, we have a motion to approve Sean Dolberg as Treasurer for the 2021-2022 school year.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Congratulations, Mr. Dolberg. All right, next I have a motion to approve School Board Secretary for a four-year term as required by Section 404 of the school code. Mrs. Chenoweth is the candidate recommended to serve in this capacity and also serves in the position of Secretary to the Superintendent.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Walters. Questions or comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Mrs. Chenoweth, thank you very much for your continued service to the board. All right. Next, I have a motion to approve the first reading of policies listed A and B below. First one is Policy 103, the second is Policy 104.
Second it.
Seconded by Mr. Wirth. Questions or comments from board members?
Just for those members of the community who may not have been able to listen in on the committee meetings when we discussed this this past month. Both of these are recommended changes through PSBA and primarily as a result of new Title IX legislation, which deals with discrimination. And so both of these have very heavy updated language specific to that title of legislation.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Questions, comments, board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. The next Personnel Committee Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 1st. The IU, Mrs. Bannas Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. The IU met on April 20th. The Bucks County IU participated in a PA IU Day on the Hill. The group reminded the legislators that Bucks IU has been offering in-person instruction to students with disabilities since the fall of 2020. The group also advocated for designated funding for intermediate units through the third round of federal stimulus dollars through the American Rescue Plan Act and shared that intermediate units receive no federal dollars from either the elementary and secondary schools' emergency relief funds, one or two. Intermediate units are the only educational entity not to receive any COVID relief funds. Finally, the group advocated for increased preschool and early intervention funding, stressing the growing. stressing the growing number of preschool children served in Bucks County and the increased amount of multiple and complex services some early intervention students need. The Bucks IU also is receiving a $150,000 PA Smart Grant to expand the outstanding work of the Mobile Fab Lab. This is the second PA Smart Grant for the Bucks IU, having received a grant in 2019 to design and launch the Mobile Fab Lab, which is specially equipped transit van that brings interactive computer science and digital fabrication equipment not normally available in most schools directly to students in grades one through eight throughout Bucks County. The new grant awarded to the Bucks IU will allow an expansion of the Mobile Fab Lab's STEAM and computer science programs to take education in these areas beyond the classroom. To do this, the funds from this grant are focused on the development of three specific programs: an educational program for teachers called Fab Fellows Program, an expansion of services to children experiencing homelessness, and a partnership to advance community involvement in education. The Fab Lab Fellows Program will be hands-on professional development opportunity for Bucks County teachers, providing specialized learning in the areas of digital fabrication and computer science. Upon program completion, fellows will continue to have virtual networking meetings, and they will schedule a week-long residency at their school with the Bucks IU Mobile Fab Lab. To support children experiencing homelessness, teachers from regional school districts experiencing higher homeless rates will be selected to become Fab Fellows. These teachers will then partner with the Bucks IU's Mobile Fab Lab to implement special STEAM, computer science, and digital fabrication programs in their districts. To help take education beyond the classroom and support partnerships that advance community involvement, the Bucks IU will be working with the Bucks County Public Libraries to offer some special daytime and evening STEAM, computer science, and digital fabrication programs to their communities. Dual Language Celebration Week. The Office of Head Start and the National Center on Early Childhood Development celebrated Dual Language Learner Week. They do that every year in the last week of February. This event supports staff who work with dual language learners and their families. The Office of Head Start organized Facebook Live events that included chats with experts and colleagues in the field. Some of the topics covered were shining a light on indigenous knowledge, heritage in language, building belonging in a virtual world, honoring home, strategies from science and technology in different languages, and activating virtual interactions. Michelle Kiker, Youth Services Librarian from the Doylestown Library graciously agreed to hold two Storytime sessions. Kids participated in person and virtually. Michelle incorporated puppets and music and movement into her sessions. Classroom staff organized multicultural dress-up days, read culturally relevant books with follow-up activities, and introduced music from around the world, celebrating their diverse cultures. For professional education, gifted education, the Bucks IU is offering two full days of virtual professional development and gifted education, Gifted Ed 101, Day One and Day Two. These days were formerly known as Gifted Ed Boot Camp. Participants can sign up. The first one was just held and focused on the history of gifted education, characteristics of the gifted child, the social-emotional needs of gifted children, and will introduce and introduce the Pennsylvania Gifted Education Regulations as noted in Chapter 16 of the school code from an implementation and compliance perspective. It also highlighted the district-wide approach to gifted education. On May 20th, Day Two will highlight the gifted options of enrichment and accelerations as designated by Chapter 16, with special emphasis on how to incorporate the options into the gifted individual education plan based on the gifted written report and reevaluations. Enrichment strategies such as curriculum compacting, tiered lessons, project-based learning, and curriculum integration of such strategies will be outlined. The latest research on acceleration and types of acceleration will also be explored. In addition, Day Two will focus on specialized program options for gifted students such as seminars and critical and creative thinking strategies, and where such options fit into the GIP development. And the last thing I just want to touch on, you know, which is really exciting, is the Bucks County Career Pathways Partnership. The Bucks County Career Pathways Partnership has made some exciting progress in the 2020-2021 school year, and they concentrated on three major goals. For the sake of time, I'm just going to tell you what the three goals were, and then you guys can look at all the great things they've done in those three areas. The first one was to develop and launch a new website that will connect students and schools with business and industry experiences in Bucks County. The second was to create an initial set of a day-in-the-life career videos by leveraging local businesses whose members are actively engaged in the executive committee. And the third goal was conduct focus groups of students to learn about students' perceptions of careers and how they seek and find information about careers. So I can send that out to everybody so you can see, and maybe we can even attach some of that information so that everybody can see the great work in that area. And the next IU Board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 26.
Thank you, Mrs. Baines Clemmons. Next up is the Penrich Community Educational Foundation. Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. PCES met on May 1st this past Saturday. We discussed our lovely evening that we had on Tuesday, April 27th, which is our annual event. I was canceled last year in 2020, so we had a modified event this year over at the Penrich High School. We awarded three friends, or three community members with our Friends of Education Award. That was Bob Hosier, who's a teacher and also a high school track coach, Maria Gannon, who's a former life skills teacher in the district, and Bob Popkowski, who is a community football coach, retired community football coach. Also, we have, at the Hickory Stick tonight, if anybody has time, going on until 9:00 PM tonight is a fundraising event where a percentage of the sales, I think it's 10% or 15%, I'm not sure, but a percentage of the sales tonight are going to go back to PCF and help directly impact our classrooms. And I also wanted to highlight that we had wonderful performances at the lovely evening event. We watched our high school string ensemble, the jazz band, and also the chamber choir. And we saw some performances from the Baby and the Beast skits, Vicky Mountain songs and songs. So it was a wonderful night. And our next meeting is Saturday, June 5th.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Walters. Old business.
Mr. Kraus, I do have two announcement items that would fit under old business since they have to do with our health and safety plan. One has to do a change, has to do with a change in the recommendations from the Bucks County Department of Health that impacts mask-wearing during physical exertion during both outside recess and outside physical education classes. The Bucks County Department of Health now allows masks to be optional if individuals are outside during recess or during physical ed class and are involved in physical exertion. So you should think of it in terms of sports, because this is similar to the exemption and why both winter and spring sports have participated without masks. The county data has shown that there is no increased risk for exposure through winter and spring sports while students were unmasked and exerting during competition. This does not, however, change our expectations for indoors or for when individuals are outdoors but not exerting. At this time, the Bucks County Department of Health's interpretation on the mask mandate remains. This also does not change expectations for gatherings such as promotions, proms, graduation. This is an announcement-only item, and there is no action needed since our health and safety plan already shows that we will follow the recommendations of both state and local health officials, and so this is just a change in recommendation that we will be adopting. We'll be communicating this with the community tomorrow so that we can begin the implementation of that for outside recess as well as our outside physical education classes where exertion is being held. The second one has to do with the capacity limits that were announced, I guess a week and a half ago now, that take impact June 1st. They have been fortunate to us in terms of a lot of our senior events, and so we're able to get more family members in for graduation, which is always the biggest celebration of the year, and so seniors are able to get more tickets. But that also impacts board meetings from a standpoint of that both our committee meetings, which are held in the conference room over the DAO, as well as our board meetings will no longer have capacity limits as of June 1st, and so we can go back to having the community at our committee meetings, which we have not been able to have since a year ago, March. And so beginning with our June committee meetings, we will be back in the DAO conference room. Obviously, at this time, there is still the mask mandate, which means while we are in committee meetings or board meetings and inside, the expectation is that masks are still required while attending those meetings for the members of the public. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton. I'm sure the students will appreciate the relaxed mandates. All right. Any other old business?
No, I just wanted to clarify for the, in Dr. Damsker's note, if people are able to be socially distant outdoors, I thought that he had indicated that we could be.
That is actually not a change. We're currently doing that. If people are outdoors and stationary and at least six feet apart, they are able to take masks. That's how our students go outside and take mask breaks. And so often, especially if the weather gets warmer, we did some in September, hopefully it'll stay mid-60s for the rest of the school year. But if it doesn't, and it gets up in the 80s and 90s, teachers take students outside for increased mask breaks and water breaks, and as long as they're six feet apart, they can remove their mask during that timeframe. That's true at recess if you're stationary. Obviously, if you're involved in a game, that wasn't true, which is why students were masked during the exertion, like if they were playing soccer or gaga or something like that. Now they'd be able to unmask. So thank you for that clarification.
Good. Any other old business before we move on? Okay? New business? Anybody? Any takers? No? All right. So we do have three people signed up for public comment. According to Policy 903, "Public comment, which is limited to three minutes, should be directed to the presiding officer rather than individual board members, district employees, or members of the public. For confidentiality and privacy rights, specific comments regarding particular individuals must be communicated privately to the school board and superintendent via email@psdschoolboard@penrich.org." So the first individual up, and I will apologize in advance, it's Ms. Montegney. Come on up and step up.
Come up to the podium, and Mrs. Chenoweth will keep your time, and when you hear the bell ring, then your time is expired. There you go.
All right. I just want to thank you first for your consideration regarding the masks at recess. I know all the kids are very happy about that. I'd like to still urge the board and you, Dr. Bolton, to consider removing masks from our students completely. Masks have a significant negative effect, both physically and mentally, on our children, from headaches to difficulty learning to spell, spelling and read, and many more. Yet the efficacy data on masks is lacking. There have even been studies that have shown the masks do not prevent viral transmission. Masks are not sealed, and the virus is smaller in the holes in the fabric, so the virus is circulating whether or not you're wearing one. It's telling that there have never been a standard for fabric or thickness. Use whatever is not science. Also, it has been documented throughout the pandemic that children do not play a large role in spreading COVID. We should also be looking at schools in our area like Faith Christian Academy, where masks have been optional all year and have not had any worse COVID numbers than Penrich. Finally, we are very fortunate that the COVID vaccine is now widely available. Any teacher, immune-compromised community member, or anyone else for that matter, should be able to be vaccinated if they chose to. The point of the vaccine is to reduce the severity of COVID, so it's very relevant that the majority of the vulnerable population is now protected. Please look at all these important facts, consider removing masks from our kids as soon as possible. It is what's best for our students. They have suffered enough over the last year and a half.
Thank you. All right. Next, Ms. Drill?
Deal.
Deal? I'm sorry. Sam?
Don't tell me time.
Hi. I just want to thank, do you want to repeat?
No, no.
No, I just got the name and municipality. I just wanted to thank the school board for everything you've done for our children. I graduated Penrich in 1983. My children are in middle school, and you guys have done so much for them, so I'm very grateful. My name's Liz Deal. I'm, again, a mother of two, and I'm here to stand up against critical race theory and the indoctrination of our children. Critical race theory teaches our children that the most important thing about you is your race, the color of your skin, and that is not who you are. I reject critical race theory, and I align myself with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., that we're to judge a man not by the color of his skin, but by the content of his character. And I align myself with Governor DeSantis, recent comments that our schools are supposed to give students a foundation of knowledge, they're not supposed to be indoctrination centers. And I just want to be very clear that there's no room for critical race theory in our classrooms. Teaching kids to hate their country and to hate each other is not worth one red sin of taxpayers' money. So I just was hoping, and I'd like to ask the board if I could respectfully ask each director to state their position on the critical race theory and/or gender theory, and also maybe down the road, when the person who's not here, I think Katie Dolan, if she could give her views on that also, I just would like to hear everybody's face.
Ms. Deal, I'm terribly sorry, but public comment is the opportunity for members of the public to provide comment, and the board members are certainly free to address anything after public comment is over if they wish to do so, or they may wish to contact you by email, but there's, it's not a give-and-take, it's more the opportunity for someone to just state what's on their mind. So, and that's, that's a rule that we generally enforce for everyone, so I don't want you to think that that has anything to do with you personally. That's just the set of rules that we work by. Is that fair, ma'am?
Okay. Sorry, I didn't know that.
No, no, no. Well, I'm glad you got up and spoke. I think it's a brave act to just do that at any board meeting, and so thank you for speaking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr., there you go. Is it Mackhouse?
Ed Mackhouse.
Mackhouse, okay. It's kind of cut off here.
Okay. Hello, I'm Ed Mackhouse. Dr. Bolton was principal, my son was Calhoun Middle School. Appreciate his help. I'm still in Central Bucks. My daughter's, one of his grandmothers lives in Purvisy, and I appreciate the competition between Central Bucks and Penrich. I think Penrich has moved a little bit ahead of Central Bucks under Dr. Bolton's leadership and with the school board here, in that you're the first school district to open up and have students come back to schools, and you're, the cost per student, and Penrich is comparable to Central Bucks now, which is about half the cost of Salisbury, New Hope School District, which is half the cost, but they have $33,000 per student, and they're still not open. So I'd like to see your leadership extend to the rest of Bucks County so that all the schools could open normally in September. I appreciate what happened with my sons, graduated both from Temple. My one son, just Nathan, who is a student under Dr. Bolton, graduated honors in, in three years because two years of Van's Placement credits from Central Bucks. The other student, son, had Van's Placement credits, too, and could have graduated a year earlier, but he took computers and he's working with that. So, but I'd like to say, you need the courage to stand up against these mask mandates. I'm a scientist, the masks do no good, they do only significant harm. You're violating constitutional rights of people to breathe. We know about George Floyd, thousands of people are negatively affected by the masks. And you can be sued and held personally liable for enforcing against a person's constitutional rights. Also HIPAA, the way it works in a hospital, there's HIPAA's laws that you can be criminally liable for getting information on a person's medical conditions. People with medical conditions, especially asthma, have problems with that, and so you're requiring students to wear masks in there, could be against the doctor's orders and requiring them to have masks. You're subject yourself to legal action. You should look up the Constitutional Law Group Facebook page and on the internet, where they give information about how to sue school boards, principals, people who are violating constitutional rights of people. I know, I saw two, pictures of two Chinese students that died running with masks, so it interferes with your so interferes with your, your ability to breathe, so separation, also the smile will, is worth a thousand words and keeps people alive, love, but hey, bullying, uh, the mask doesn't cover it up.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I will say that on behalf of the board, we are not willing to share Dr. Bolton with any other school district, and therefore your idea, while lawful, um, is not happening, unless they're willing to pay a share of its time, which I doubt.
Ms. Dickinson, could you check the Zoom, please, to see if there's any other comment?
There is none.
Okay, there's no other public comment. Any questions or comments from the press? Mr. Keeler?
And I know you've gone over this a lot in the Facilities Committee, but, uh, can you go over again, the, the tennis courts? How many is it? And, um, I think it's up by the football field, um, but just basic details on the, on the tennis courts.
Yeah, let me give you the 30,000-foot view, and then obviously if you need more specific details, I'd be glad to follow up with you. Basically, the footprint is just expanding where it currently is. There are currently six tennis courts, and so we're going to expand a little bit on both sides and completely redo them, a little retention wall to help put the drop-off that's there, for a total of seven tennis courts. So the footprint will be a little larger, but it will be basically at the same space. Uh, seven tennis courts is significant. You could just be able to, uh, sponsor any kind of postseason competition. If any of our teams were to qualify for the postseason, we could not hold it here because you need to have a minimum of seven courts. And so seven is a number in PIA that is important if you can make them fit. So fortunate to the board that they were able to, um, support that, and those courts are going to be ready, pending lots and lots of rain for the first day of tennis season in mid-August, so.
Mr. Kraus, I did want to just, um, some information. To Ms. Deal's comment, uh, there are, um, there's a lot of stuff underneath the umbrella of critical race theory, and I just wanted to offer some additional information for those people who might not be familiar with what it is, uh, because the definition, of course, has been changing, too. There are, there are elements of it, such as racial, uh, race essentialism, privilege, implicit bias, and I encourage you, if you don't know what it is, that you should look into it and see that there is various pieces of legislation across the country and litigation across the country on this issue. So I appreciate you bringing it up because it is something that all school districts are going to be faced with, and, um, you know, it's something, personally, I think, that can be harmful as it focuses too much on what people look like as opposed to what's inside of themselves. So thank you for bringing it up, and I hope that people will look into it on your suggestion.
Okay. Thank you for that. Moving into announcements, an executive session was held on May 3rd to discuss a legal matter and following tonight's meeting to discuss personnel and legal matters. The next school board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 16th. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Rice, and everyone agrees to it.
Ms. Cooper, would you let us know when we're clear of the live show?